Can you guys still hear me? Can you guys still hear me?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
It's live now, Brooke, so I'm muting you, but you're still here.
Got it.
Excellent. Okay, we'll call the order of special board of trustees meeting, work session for November 3rd, I think that's what they were on. We have one trustee on remote and we have two trustees in chambers, so we do have a quorum. We should be expecting trustee about a minute. So, since we do have a quorum present, next item is to approval of the agenda. Brooke, are you, I want to make sure you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. So, item on the agenda, next item on the agenda is approval.
I move to approve the agenda.
Aye, second.
Then motion and made to approve the agenda on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is work session, information, discussion items. And so this is what this meeting is all about. And I think Dr. Russell will turn it to you, and I think you'll turn it right over to.
Yeah, Mr. Stoffer, so trustees here tonight to talk through some options and kind of just really share a culmination of what the facilities committee has been working on the last five years. And it has been a long process, it was delayed because of the COVID pandemic. But Mr. Stoffer has been a part of that committee for quite some time, I was part of that committee for quite some time. And what we're going to bring today, as we have mentioned prior, is some possible options around bonding. And that was one of the suggestions that came out of the facilities committee. And we'll share some information about that. I believe we have a video and whatnot to show them all, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Stoffer so you can kind of review our agenda, and we'll get started with that.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. So, we have an agenda with really five points that we wanted to go through today. First, we're going to talk a little bit about the facility review, part of that packet that I provided you beforehand, some information. Also, here a little bit from one of the community members who participated in this process to give you a different perspective from that of a community member. After that, I'll turn some time over to Dr. Russell, talk a little bit more about some of our priorities. And from there, I'll jump back into some really fun literature regarding FCI and deferred maintenance. It's going to be riveting. I'm excited for you to go through this.
Way to sell it.
I am so excited. And then we'll jump into the possibilities that we have based off of those previous indicators. And then kind of finalize with the long-term stability of the Nampa School District and how we view this as a component of it. So, that's our agenda for today. So, we'll go ahead and we'll hear first from Blake Wolf, who was a member, a community member that participated in the facility team. Should be coming up on both of these screens.
Yeah, so my name is Blake Wolf. I was on this building facility committee and as a parent and then a community member and perhaps even for just being a business owner and a lifelong Nampa resident and growing up here, going to all 12 years here in this school district. I was really impressed with this third-party group that came in and the team of parents and employees and professionals from this community, just all assembled to put together what is best for our school district and the needs and potential bonds and this proposal that you have. Some of the things that were really impressive were just the finding out like we've got buildings that are in great shape, but they might be at the end of their life. They've been maintained well and the resources we've got with our maintenance team, with Kelly and those guys, and they're awesome, but there's just, it looks like it's, we've come to that point where some of these buildings need some serious consideration on what we do with them. Obviously, the hot topic has been Nampa High and the safety of the students around that building, parking. All that was something I have always thought, but then you bring in somebody from outside and they put it on paper with statistics and you're like, yeah, this is a problem, we need to figure this out. The other thing that was really impressive was the community meetings we held that brought in anybody and everybody that wanted a voice in it. And the thing I learned the most during that was the parents of specifically Nampa High didn't feel like there was a balance of equity between the high schools. They kind of felt like they were getting the short end of the stick on facilities and those things I mentioned, just the safety and that was eye-opening. My girls that just graduated went to Skyview, where it's slightly newer, not as new as Columbia, but nicer facilities. I went to Nampa High and didn't know any different, but now that you see the way they do high schools and they don't do the campus style like college anymore, it's just, it's totally different. And that was all evident with the studies and the proposals. Yeah, I think that the way that we're funded as a district, that the proposal with the way money needs to be raised through bonds is really a good, solid answer. And we just need to be proactive because this stuff is not going away. I mean, the buildings are just getting older and older.
So, that was Blake Wolf. He participated on the committee for us for various years as well. And so, he was out of town this week, otherwise he wanted to be here in person. So, he came in on his own to record that for you. So, glad that Blake was able to do that. With that, we have another little introduction to the rest of our presentation that we'll go ahead and be also up on our screens.
Tyler, was that you?
We did ask Tyler to put that together because we wanted to start the meeting by, I think, revisiting this idea that we have had around discussions around what is our hope and dreams for the district? Where do we want the district to go? And I think as the board is now starting its ninth or 10th month in the administration, we came together, I think we have similar commonalities around what we want to see for our district in the future. And we have some priorities here. I don't know if we're going to show the PowerPoint. These are some things that the board has discussed in open sessions. It's the things the board has had discussions with myself and I've had with individual board members. You know, one of the things that we want to become is a destination district, a district where this is where people want to be, people want to work, people want to send their kids to go and get educated, teachers want to work. And in that video, I think kind of it gets you excited thinking about the possibilities of that. The second one we talked about is Napa Pride. I think you heard that with Blake talking about, you know, there's pride when you go to school here, you grew up here, you get educated here, you raise your family here, you have your business here. We have many in our community that have a great deal of pride and our school districts should reflect that. The other one is just simply that, as well as school districts reflect their community. As you drive around, you're talking about moving into our community and you see the school districts, you know, the buildings, the conditions that they are, the grass that's in front of them, the landscaping, all of that sends a message, whether it's subtle or not. It reflects what type of community it is. And I think about driving by some of our newer buildings like a Lone Star, and you look at a Lone Star and you think that's a beautiful school. It sends a message about our community. Extraordinary learning experiences, that's something our district has talked about a great deal. That's something that we want to have every single day as much as we can, having opportunities as we think about our kids and the opportunities they have, looking at that video of some of the weight rooms, the athletic facilities, the performing arts facilities, all of those desires that we want our kids to experience and be a part of and that other kids in other communities have as well. But, you know, our kids deserve the best. We want to make sure we have that. And then we've talked about our facilities as well. We know that we got some facilities that are in great shape. We got some facilities that are starting to be towards the end of their life. And it's important that we be good stewards to what the taxpayers have given us. And we're here tonight, I think, to talk about that, because that's another really important part. We are only really, I mean, honored to take care of these. They're really not ours, they're everybody's. We got the big responsibility ensuring that we are using our taxpayer money well, that we are looking at the future. I was talking with Mayor Kling and she was having very similar things about, just in general, the city. When you talk about the city and its role in the responsibility of looking towards the future and making sure all of our facilities meet our needs, but are going to meet the needs of the community in 10, 15, 20, 25 years. So, you know, that video, it gets me excited because I think about the future of what our community can be. And I think that's what we've all wanted, board, administration. And tonight, we got some opportunities, I think, to talk through it. And there are only possibilities. There is nothing that we're going to share tonight that is set in stone, is just simply a starting point. And then hopefully through our conversation today, we might be able to hopefully narrow that down to maybe some more clearer ideas. And then if there's more information that we need to bring, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. So, now we get to go through the building structure 101, I guess, is what we're going to call it. So, I gave that wonderful pamphlet or book that had all the information from the facilities maintenance committee review. And we're going to review a couple of the pages just to kind of set the baseline of where our proposals are coming from. So, the first one that I showed is this one that if we can throw it up on the screen, Tyler, it's called calculating facilities cost. In your book, it's on page 14, if you want to look at it in your books. And really, this is the lifespan of a building. There are some predisposed indicators of how you can, or how you upkeep your building and maintain it to be a place that is usable. So, the graphic that we have right now, you can see that there is this kind of upward wave and there's benchmarks or lines through that where things need to be done with inside that timeframe in order to bring the buildings up to standard. So, this is just kind of more of a graphic. We're not going to really dive into this one, but just kind of give you an idea of things that need to happen over the lifespan of a building. The first one is about that 20 to 25 years. You're going to want to start replacing some of the main components, the HVAC, heating systems. You're starting to look at some of your lighting elements, you're just looking at your main structure components and you're looking at starting to replace those. About 40 to 45 years, the standard basically is you want to modernize, you want to take them through a remodel to bring them up to what is the current standard of both building specs and just usages. Then you start looking at more of the components replacements and that's 60 to 65, then again, over modernization or replace. And so, that's kind of the, kind of a standard amongst the industry of how you handle buildings. So, that's just what that graphic is for. And you kind of see where that comes into play as we start talking a little bit more about our facilities. The next one we want to talk about is this wonderful concept called FCI, which is your facility condition index. And it is a formula. And this formula was actually created in the 80s by the US Navy. And basically, what they were doing is trying to find a variable of how to expense federal dollars into purchasing or remodeling or retiring naval ships. And so, this indicator kind of took hold in the 80s and now it's become the indicator of how you work with your buildings. The idea is in those graphs is that you want to keep your renewal repair costs, which is divided by replacement cost, that percentage, you want to keep it in one of those bandwidths, either good or fair. You start looking at poor and critical, there are some components to your building that will start being unusable. And so, I have a little graphic here that kind of describes a little bit more about what I just shared. I'll have that passed to you. And then also, just a rubric of what those categories mean and some ideas that what does this mean for buildings? If the building's in yellow, what does that mean? If the building is a green, orange, or red, what does that mean? Some similar information on this that you can have as well. You're going to hear a lot about FCI in the next few, next duration of our plan, you're going to hear a little bit about FCI. Already got them? Good. The next slide that we have is what we currently are as a district for our FCI. Now, again, that's that indicator of what type of condition our buildings are in. We actually, since we produced this document in July, we've had a couple of additions to this, which have actually helped our FCI a little bit. It's lowered that number. We're currently sitting about nine and a half percent FCI due to some of the HVAC renovations that we've done in many of our schools. That has helped dropped our FCI indicator, which is a good thing. We want that number to drop. You can look at how this graph over time becomes greater or puts our buildings in worse condition. Looking back at that very first graphic, as buildings age, they have more needs, they cost more to take care of. So, the black line is if we just let things roll and we did not invest into any modernization, any components being taken out, this is the trend line that our buildings across the district would flow. So, that's that trend line. The blue line is currently we're averaging about $1.2 million of putting back into our facilities to help with offsetting new equipment. In all reality, we're band-aiding anything that pops up on the radar. So, if there is an HVAC system that goes down, this is the money that we're using to fix or replace. If there's doors, if there's windows, this is what we use to offset that price and kind of keep it moving. As you can see, that blue line and the black line start to separate. And this is over, I think, 50 years is what this calendar is over. So, that split or that blue line, even though you have a little bit of movement that's lower, still is keeping that trend line pretty much on an upward trend of how our facilities will age over time and their needs that we'll have over time.
Any questions?
Questions? Are we starting, I can't read the number, is that 2022?
Yeah, it's 2022, and this was, our finalized publish was 2022 in July. And at that point in time, it was 11.6 was our starting point then, but like I said, we have adjusted that number due to some renovations of our HVAC systems in our elementary schools. Any additional questions? So far, how's the 101 on buildings going?
Makes sense.
All right, so far, we're doing good? Okay. The next one is, on your next page, is really just looking at the age of our facilities. That's what this graph indicates, the year that they were built, how many square footage was added to it. In that box that you have at the top, there's 46 buildings total, not 46 schools, 46 buildings. And there's our total gross square footage, our average age is 42 years.
Does that include your district office?
Yeah, this includes all of the district's properties. And again, one number to look at, when you're looking at the FCI, is that current replacement value is over 730 million. So, when we're looking at that, that's that bottom number that goes back into the equation when we're looking at the FCI. So, that's where we start to generate those numbers and how they come to fruition, is doing the evaluation of our district, going through the asset management plan that we finalized with the facility plan, and taking note of all of those needs and then basically putting them all together to come up with the FCI. The next slide that I'll show you too, why it also, I think this is a very telling slide.
I'm sorry, just very quickly, the current replacement value, 730 million, that was if we were.
Everything just boom.
All of our, do you have brand-new everything?
Brand-new everything. Well, not brand-new, at equal value for what it has right now. So, there's a discrepancy. Would be building a brand-new, state-of-the-art district office if this fell down. It would be the replacement value for the insurance that we could get, which doesn't necessarily equate to one-to-one.
And even that is 730?
Yes, even that is 730 million.
Okay.
So, again, it's not a, it's more for how it currently is, not building our dream of what it would look like. It would be replacement, not building new. So, replacing as it was. That was a good question. That one actually came up in our committee. I'm glad it did because I was able to answer that.
That's a really important one. It's not replacing brand-new, it's really bringing up to the standard we're current.
Which, this next one, which is deferred maintenance, this one was a telling sign for me as I was learning about, you know, facilities and how we are taking care of them. The first box is where we're at right now. We have deferred backlog, which means we have not, we have chosen purposely not to upkeep some of our resources in our buildings. We've put them off because they're functioning and we're not touching them and we're just letting them go, or we're band-aiding them to move them forward. We have a deferred backlog of 84.55 million in things that need to be done in our buildings.
Do you have a couple of examples of those, like big ones that?
Yeah. So, down, actually on this form, it's hard to see, but I will share with you a little bit more. So, they're broken down, those colors are actually broken down by categories of what they represent. So, the blue represents the shell, the outside building structure. The green is the interior, the walls, the ceiling, any of those things that are attached to the inside structure of the building. The yellow is the building site work, so that's anything that's, I believe that includes the grounds, anything in the grounds. The orange indicates the mechanical components. The red is equipment and furnishings. The blue is electrical, and then the green is substructure. In your packet, the line right below also talk, are the next few pages actually break down what some of those things may look like and the cost of each one of those. They're not the best graphics, but that's, I can get you some more.
Let's do an example, like Skyview High, what is the?
Yeah, so Skyview High, you're looking at your HVAC systems. They haven't really been touched since the school was built in 97. And so, they are past their usage time. And so, we have not replaced them in the manufacturer's timeline, and so it comes on our deferred maintenance. We have chosen not to do it. So, all of our HVAC systems that are now 30 years old, we have not replaced them. But, we should have been looking at replacing them about that 20 to 25 years. Does that help?
Yeah. So, it looks like the biggest chunk of, not the biggest, it looks like the largest share is the shell. And, I mean, when I hear that, I think of bricks crumbling on the outside of the building and sidewalks. Or is that side?
That's in the building site work on that yellow. So, a lot of times.
Napa High School, I can see some of that crumbling and, you know, the shell of the buildings and things like that. I don't necessarily see Columbia, those older schools.
And you're starting to see it at Skyview and Napa High, if you're looking at those two buildings, their exterior, you're starting to see some of those things happening. And there's one corner in Skyview that we were just working on that continuously is getting water coming through. So, that's one of the things that we would be looking at is that those shelves, we patch it to the best of our ability versus doing the true remodel that it needs to fix.
For clarity. Some of the things that are on that, you know, we just did a huge million-dollar replacement of a roof at Napa High for a couple of the buildings. There's 11 buildings, we haven't replaced them all. East Valley, you know, fairly new, 03 building, 20 years old, had to have a roof replacement.
It's coming up, actually.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one we're going to be talking about in this meeting. So, it could include, you did mention sidewalks, it could include that, whereas are we just grinding them versus replacing? You know, there's a lot of those different technical things that come into this evaluation. They looked at everything, both small and large.
And I just keep thinking, in addition to a whole lot of things, but just safety of students, I mean, the students walking around on those sidewalks or walking by a corner of a building and they're coming around a corner and a brick falls on their head or something. That's the kind of, that's where my mind is like, you know, anyways, thanks for this.
No, I appreciate it. Any other further questions? Because we really, that's our point of kind of going over this to build the foundation for why we are looking at the next step.
Well, I think it's, I just think it's important to remember that, like, some of these things would have continued to be deferred, having not been able to use semester funds for some of the HVACs and things like that, just because of the lack, the lack of funding.
Levy funds as well.
And levy funds as well, and right, wrong, or indifferent, right, of where we're going, not to place blame or say anything, but just there's the reality that we're in.
Yep.
And we got to, we got to live in it and we got to build and move from there. So, but thinking about that too, to me, with that trend line, we don't always have those big jumps of where we're going to have something. And so, how do we still maintain?
I think that's a great point because even that number is representative with some of those infused funds that we typically don't have. And that, we're still at that number. So, throughout the rest, that's one of the things that we took back to, coupled with what Dr. Russell had mentioned earlier, coupled with this facilities report and those outtakes, that's what we came together to really start to design what packages may look like. And so, we're going to jump into the packages, the time you've been waiting for, right? So, go ahead and Tyler, if you move through the next one, go ahead and go to the next one. One of the things we're just going to, we put out here right now is a lot of these things that we're talking about are through the bonding. So, the packages we're building are specifically looking at using the bonding funding source as the main source to take care of these items. There are other levy monies, there are other ways to look at, a few of these deferred maintenance costs in particular. There are other funding that you can look at, but we're looking specifically through the lens of the bond through this discussion.
Real quickly, for the benefit of whoever might be listening now or in the future, but the difference between a levy and a bond, I think is important to differentiate. So, just real quickly, could you?
Yeah, so supplemental levy is a ability to levy tax dollars. It's typically used for, well, as the term says, things that are supplemental. It requires a 50%, just basic majority vote of the public to be able to do that. Bonding and and so the things that we use for that basically, I would say are not supplemental. We use our curriculum, our staffing and our technology are the primary ones. And then we do some other things around uniforms and creating some of the activity, things that we have for music and other stuff.
With the levy money.
With the levy money. Bonding is for building larger projects, new construction. It requires a super majority to pass, is essentially where the district would have bonds and sell bonds and would get into the bond market and use the taxable value that we have within the city, which includes the homes, the businesses, and the industry to be able to leverage some of those revenues. So those, that's the major differences. Supplemental levies by law every two years have to come up for reelection. Bonding, you typically have a longer period, so we're probably looking at 20, 25 year bonds, which is why we're in the situation we are today, because our bonds in the early 2000s, when we built the pools that we have, the Lone Star, the Columbia Highs, those type of bonds are starting to end. And we have an opportunity to, as those basically retire, build new bonds and really can keep our tax rate very level. And that's really important, I think, when you're talking about civic entities of keeping tax rates level so folks don't see a drastic increase in their taxes. And as we will always have needs, I think that's important too, because the civic entities in the school district were going to have needs around our buildings as they age.
And in bonds, there's some restrictions, I mean, you can't just take the bond money that's been approved by the, by the voters and go out and buy band uniforms or.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, bond has a very specific use money.
Specific use money, very, very earmarked for what it can and cannot be.
Can I ask a question that I actually don't know that I've ever heard asked, or could, could levy, could we pass, I mean, could we try to pass a levy to pay for building maintenance and things? Or is it, I mean, is that restricted or?
So there is a mechanism to do that, and we will brush on it. It would be a plant facilities levy.
Okay.
Which is a little bit different than a supplemental levy. So we do not have a plant facilities levy, many school districts have a supplemental, those supplemental things. They have a plant facilities, which usually deals with the deferred maintenance. And then you have a bond for new construction. So we could do a plant facilities levy. And this is going to be really important that we keep these two separate, deferred maintenance and new construction. Because we will not build a bond to do both, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Well, we could, but then again, going back to that statement of wanting to make sure that our taxpayers' tax rate is level, we would not want to do that, that would cause a great increase. And we all know what we're dealing with, inflation and those type of things, so we don't want to deal with that. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit around. Randy wants to talk?
No, Brooke has it. Randy always wants to talk, but Brooke has it.
I actually just had a question, I was just texting Chrissy. And just for historical knowledge, because we have so many new people in our district now, if somebody wanted good information on like what we've done, you know, to show that we've been good stewards of previous bonds, what is the best way for people to get that historic information?
Yeah, we have a transparency page on our website.
Perfect.
Give you a good indicator of where things are being expensed. Randy updates some of it.
Yeah, so Brooke, I gotta ask, on bonds or on supplemental levy?
I think just on bonds, sorry, I needed this one a while ago, but I just think, because sometimes people just be like, you know, well, what happened with the last bond, or that question just comes up, because we haven't bonded for so long. And a lot of people, I mean, I know, you know, I was here when Lone Star was a new school. But we have a lot of people in, you know, in town now that weren't here when Lone Star was a new school. So like if people wanted that historic information, is our website the best place for them to get that information? It was just a question.
Yeah, so what we could do, I could find the schools that were created for each bond. So basically, we've had a ton of bonds, you know, you know, we went through the 1990s, through the 2000s, mid 2000s with a bunch. One of the things that convolutes it though is we refinanced them a few times as well. So the original bond doesn't show up on our records, but we refinanced and saved money. But we can provide the patrons that needed a, here's what we did this bond and this is what we paid for. Here's what we did this bond and here's what we paid for, the major projects. Because there were some side projects we did that, you know, some facilities, things and some furniture and that that kind of convolutes it. But the major products, your projects like Columbia and Lone Star and all of our H kind of schools, those were easy to basically show when those were on.
Done, and I just, and the only reason again is just because like I, you know, like I, I remember there being no Skyview. So, so when I, when I'm talking to you and I see our facilities, but just when we have so many people who have relocated to our district, I just think that, yeah, it makes sense to want to know some historic information on previous years. And we're like, oh, we built schools, this school, that school, you know, from memory. But just, just as a point of clarification for people who are asking, that was the only reason I wanted to inquire.
Yeah, I, it's great, I think the short answer for anybody that has any questions about any of that would please just contact the district. I mean, come in, look down and go through some of the questions and answers for them. We could talk to them about the historical uses of the bonds, the refinancing, that is something that we'll also possibly want to talk about at some point as well, as we know the feds are raising interest rates. But the finances with bonds is you refinance, when certain rates get to certain levels, it helps taxpayers. So again, as Randy said, our bonds, they will look a little different from what they originally were because of that refinance options. But short answer is come in, happy to sit down, talk with people, and would encourage people to do that.
Yeah, and I would second that also, but couldn't we also put that information on the website? So those who may not have time to come in and sit down, maybe just put that historical, not all the details and things like that, but here's what we built with this bond.
Sure, we can do that.
Thanks, guys, I'm, I'm remuting.
All right.
As we go through this, that's part of the education process. He's here, he's got the information available to people. He's here, it's going to be, it is goes through to sell, but hard to let people know.
Any additional questions? Good stuff.
I forget where, I hope you're, I hope you're keeping track of where we're going.
I am, I'm ready. So as we start to show you the different options, we have three proposals that we're going to work through with you. One thing to note with each one of those proposals, as it, as you look at what is in that package and what happens with that package, it changes your FCI and your deferred maintenance cost if we take off and redo in Napa High. There's going to be a significant reduction in your deferred costs and your FCI gets lowered because you're taking off an old building and bringing on a new building, which doesn't meet, doesn't have those needs when it's brand new. So so just, we'll, we'll talk about that too, of how each plan, how it impacts our FCI and how that helps us long term. So with that, we'll go into our first option. And I know somebody liked to write and take notes, so I put this into a document for you to be able to write on as well. They're all in one packet right now. Yep, it's all one packet. No, this is, this is for the proposals, the one before was all the historical information of what led us up to this point in time. Yep, these are just hard copies of what we'll go through. So Package A, Package A, the way that this is set up structurally is the green part is what we're suggesting would go out for a Package One for a bond. The grayed out area is what was put in the facilities maintenance plan that we would not be doing. So we'd be electing not to do the grayed out, we'd be electing to do what's in the green. So that's, that's how it's set up structurally. So in the first one, it'd be 153.2 million dollars. As you can see the breakdown, the number one piece would be Napa High with a price tag around 100 million dollars. A new career technical center, CT center, for 30 million. The auxiliary gym for Columbia High School, which was left off the original plans at the time they were building Columbia. They had to do some, some reduction to meet costs. And the auxiliary gym was cut off, which puts it at the, it's down one gym in comparison to the other two schools. So they're trying to manage with two gyms where our other two high schools have three gyms and practice facilities. They would also, at Skyview, we would have 7.5 million for a new theater and a renovation of the existing theater to turn it into a band room. The band room is woefully undersized right now for the type of program that they do have. Also, that opportunity to redo their theater would bring it up to what would be more standard, not only for, for our valley, is what we're really looking at there. The other things that would come out of there would be, again, district resurfacing of the middle school and high school tracks, replacing a tennis court at Columbia High School. Stadiums having some upgrades inside the bleachers, field upgrades, this would include the turf. Bulldog bowl renovations to bring it back into our, it's, it's, has a lot of needs right now as well. With our gyms, we'd be looking at again some bleachers, weight room updates and, and sound systems that would facilitate those areas as well. So that's the green.
Just clarification, Courtney, when we talk about weight rooms, bleachers replacements, that's at all the schools.
All the schools, yeah, they're not, those on the district level athletics would be all the schools. So I'll let you look at that for a minute. The gray side are again the recommendations from the facility maintenance team that we have not put into this package. And you'll see a similar between all three of our options that we'll present to you, it'll be in the same format. So you'll be able to compare them apples to apples in that sense.
Package A does not include any elementary schools.
It does not, does not.
Which will all be deferred.
Now, the ramification for that in our next screen or in the next page that you have is this will reduce our FCI by one and a half percent. It also lowers our 10 year, and that's the big indicator there as well. If you look at, it lowers its almost 6% in our 10 year FCI, which is a pretty decent number. This one, what it will cost, this will cost $7 per 100,000 assessed value each year. So what does it do? It does give us a state of the art facility for Napa High. It does give us a state of the art career and technical facility, which every student or district can benefit. It does provide a renovation at Skyview High School for our performing arts. It also does provide equitable physical education space at Columbia. And it improves spaces for fine arts and athletic and athletic programs across the district. So that's what we were able to get with that 153.2.
Just one other thing to hit with that is, is I know the elementary, it does leave out the thought process with Package A, though, as you go through the system, it would touch every kid. Every kid essentially would go through Napa High, Columbia, or Skyview, the vast majority would. And so their experience at their high school level would impact them in that way.
And maybe a caveat is these are presented because they build off of each other, not necessarily in order of preference. It's just, this is how, they're, they're just built based off of A is the base, and then you'll see B and C based off of A. So want to make that clarification.
Other thing here, we, you know, $7 per 100,000 of assessed value, trying to, we worked with Anthony Hughes that we contacted. Yeah, Ada County Assessor's Office, so, Kenny County, sorry. Kenny County Assessor's Office, and looking at roughly around the average home being around 300,000. So with this package, it'd be a $21 increase after, yes.
400 and something minus here.
Yeah, just generally for, we can go into all the details, we, the average home is around 400,000, some thousand. We take away the session, you get close to around the $300,000 line, so. We just wanted to kind of.
Buy that as monthly or yearly?
Yearly, yearly, so if you go to a month, you're looking at like a $1.75 a month.
Package A. Any questions on that, are you ready to go look at the next ones, or you want to percolate a little bit more on this one?
Explain real quickly if you have a deferred, have a gray area, what's in this 153 million?
It does, it does. So essentially, we'd have two options, you could bond and you could get brand new things. And you could also build deferred maintenance with it. But typically, bonds are the things that people are going to want to bond. And if you're gonna have to raise your taxes in any way, you want something new for it.
Right.
Rather than fixing an old roof on an older building. So it doesn't really address that.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is because in the, on the second page of the Package A, under that circle, one of those things called the graph, it says deferred to future program, likely 66.7% voter approval. That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
It can, it can be through a myriad of different options, like we talked about earlier, about distinguishing between a bond, supplemental, facilities maintenance, there's other avenues.
Okay, so that's what that voter approval means, and so it may not be 66 to 70.
It may not be.
It could be a 50% point, if we go through a levy.
Plant facilities levy, if we were to do that, and I think what we're hoping to see as you go through these packages, there's probably going to be a need down the road across to do that, to hit the deferred maintenance. All right, thank you.
And can I, so what the committee came up with are these items that we see in the green and the gray. So those were the priorities.
Yeah, so if you get back.
So that's, that's why they're listed there, not just because randomly, this isn't gonna happen. Yeah, so I just want to make sure people understand that, that, yeah, that these two lists together, it's one list of here's what the
Correct.
Facilities, maintenance, committee, I can't remember the name of the committee now, sorry.
You did good.
Came up with, okay, thank you.
So from, to correlate it to your, the packet that I provided you earlier, that, not that page that the gray and the green all equate to is. Somebody beats me to it. Just looking for the recommendations right here. There, there is, not to bring anything up, I think we do have an incorrect amount under Program A under deferred maintenance. I believe that is not including the last 25 and a half million for Centennial.
It's actually not including a couple of things, the district office, it's not including.
So great, I'm just talking at the top of the grade, that, that amount is not the amount of total what we have in that column. That I don't think that Centennial is at it, and I believe that 50, 55.4 includes everything but Centennial Elementary. And just as, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as we go through there. Because I believe Package C, you'll see it does, and so those, those show the same. And again, again, these are proposals and we have much more running to go through, but wanted to make sure we're transparent on that. So originally, the committee came back with a relative number of around 250 million is what the needs were for the district and for the cities, that's in your packet. So that's actually, what we did originally, right off the bat, is we took off the recommendation for a new district office. We took that out and had to reconsider that, that was 18 million. So if you look at that number, it's right around that 212 million, or 210, 232.
Yep.
Million is what that number that we're looking at with, with this. All right, so I know you're probably starting to look through the other packages, so for viewers that are out there, we'll kind of cover Package B for you. Now, recognizing Package B is a build off of Package A. So the, the different items that will be included in Package B would be all those capital expenses or those renewals that were on the gray deferred. You'll notice that the Columbia and high school deferred maintenance issues were crossed out there and then moved over into this package. Those are the main, that is the main difference between Package A and Package B, is the need for flooring in Columbia High School, Skyview High School as well. There would be major components of upgrade in Skyview High School at this, there's about 18 million dollars worth of upgraded infrastructure that would go into Skyview with this package. Then in kind, the next screen kind of talks a little bit about what your overall FCI, what this package would do for our FCI, both in the immediate and then a 10 year. The cost for this package for, per 100,000 is $16 per 100,000. So $11 increase from Package A. Excuse me, $9.
$4 a month.
Yeah, $4 a month. $4 a year.
$4 a month, really the average.
Really the average home.
That is really critical to look to, to have that perspective. I mean, I'm thinking of my Netflix.
Right, right. It's a little bit more.
I'd rather pay for, to help pay for a school than like, you know, get rid of that.
Boils down to one or two copies.
Uh, renovations, you were talking about some flooring and things like that. Is there any significant other than flooring renovations that would be needed at Columbia and Skyview?
Skyview, yes.
I know there is a, there's a roller coaster hallway in Skyview that's kind of fun to walk.
There's some structural components we talked about. There is definitely there electric, there's some electrical issues that we have been finding. There is HVAC systems, like I said, we have not updated any of the HVAC.
So we're not talking about renovating classrooms or, I mean.
No, this is, this is the, this is the non, as you, I think you used this term earlier, the non sexy things or non shiny things. These are the things that keep buildings going. This is when you come in that they function, that they're keeping the environment comfortable for students to learn. This is, are the lights functioning in every place? Is the water functioning appropriately? We have a lot of plumbing issues uh, in Skyview as well. We're, we're consistently trying to patch those. So these would take care of those major needs that have already been identified. And again, it's a big price tag, it's about $18 million.
While they're not shiny, um, again, being good stewards of the tax grade dollars, it has to be done. Because if we don't, um, then we're not doing the jobs of being the stewards of the buildings that are allowed, given to us.
You think of those kids sitting in those classrooms and they're just freezing. How are they supposed to concentrate on, man, well, any environment or how are they supposed to concentrate on that? But, or it's too hot or too cold.
That leads us then to package C. Package C, uh, is again a derivative of package A. So going back to package A, we just added some pieces to package A. Really what is added to package C is the Columbia and Skyview needs that we talked about in package B are moved back to deferred. And we move Centennial Elementary School onto the, the bond package, which equates to about 178.7 million. So the, we would again move the Skyview Columbia needs to deferred.
About 18 million.
That 18, it's actually about 22 million. We would move between the two schools, we'd move back over. And we move over the 25.5 million for Centennial to to rebuild a new Centennial. Tear down the current one and build a new existing one on the same site.
Wonder if we left that in there? I'm supposed to. One, two, 212.
200 million.
Yeah.
The, if we were to move most of those over, the, the final price tag is 212.
Oh, yeah. So really quickly, um, you said the district office is not going to be part of that. That's why we get to 212. Do you have any plans for Napa High School if we do move to to, to pass it on for this? I mean, are you going to utilize that you have?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there, there's a part of it that we would look at putting the, the career technical center at the, the current Napa site and use the, the land that we have for the new Napa High site.
It, it said, what about the district office, could you move it out there?
There's lots of things we could do, but it costs money. And so that's one of those things that we, we wanted to focus on kids first and and take care of the kids through this. There's
Yeah, to answer the question mark, yes, there, there are options. What you could do is if you were to build Napa High on the, the new location where we have the property, you could possibly raise some buildings. There's a possibility for us to even um, lease to build new buildings. You could do so commercially, you could put a new district office there. You know, so there's a lot of possibilities to do with that property. We definitely would want to put a CTE center there, um, you know, because that's central to town. But there are, we, we are very blessed as a district that we have resources of, of lands that we could use and possibly sell and, and bring on some abilities to work with some developers and potentially could get a newer district office, a more modern boardroom that would fit our community. And so we're not, not packing here when we need to and stuff like that. When you look around our Valley Views and our CUNAs and our other districts, they have those things. So it's a need for the district.
Yeah. Have you computed the, the monthly amount if we were to do a 212?
We have, yeah, we have that package, we didn't present it.
We didn't present it, but we have it. If you want to see it, we can show it to you.
You just have the number of what the breakdown will be?
We have.
We, we put it together.
It wasn't one that we wanted to necessarily present, but we had it.
Just being sensitive to taxes, you know, knowing that the higher the taxes go, the higher the burden goes and just in the environment that we're in, we want to be sensitive to that. But we, we did calculate, we thought the question could come up, so.
So, uh, do you have it Tyler? Uh, so Tyler will put it up on there, it's not your packet. The total amount's 210.2 million, that's what we looked at. We did look at putting everything in the green and still looking at some of those deferred things. So you can look, you were there. There you go. So, uh, again, Napa High Centennial would go beyond this presentation. The new career and technical center, Columbia with the new gym and its capital renewal would be here. Skyview with its new theater renovation of the band room. The capital that we talked about was needed to fix it would be included. Renovations at West Middle School, renovations at Central. The district level athletics piece stays the same from package A, still stays on there. We'd also add safety and security. And then because of some of those, there might, there's going to be some demolition that would need to be done, so we included that in there as well. There still are things in the deferred, if you've noticed, that we still left a few items over there as well. There is some needs at East Valley and South. Some of those we're, we're trying to work on and plan as, form as well in the future. Iowa and Sherman each had both a price tag about four and a half million and needed renovations. We took off sites and grounds, um, which was about 10.5 million from the master. And so those are things that we still kept off at the 210 million.
Can I ask about the safety and security?
Yeah.
Why was that not included in the regular part, what, what it said? I mean, or in these packages?
No, I think it's a good question. Some of those, what we're looking at are staggering. Right now, we, we are looking at camera systems. We have some camera systems, this would be upgrading camera systems to be consistent across the district. But we already have camera systems in every building. So it was an added on top of, if that makes sense. So that's part of those costs that would be incorporated in the safety and security. Some of that also includes, um, looking at our entrances going from a key to a badge, which were, were, we have a systematic plan. This would be able to, this would allow us to do that at a much more progressive rate. Not that it wouldn't be that we're not doing something, it would just expedite us to be able to get those things.
Would you say it's a, another level of safety? It would put us in a different level of, of more safety and security?
I think for the, for the camera systems, for sure, what it allows us to do is have one system, which our, our police department would really like. We're not currently at that point, we're moving towards it, but it would help that. So our, our police department would be able to have access to one system, easier for them to see and respond. The card entry is, you know, as soon as you make keys, uh, the key can be handed. And, and so it kind of, it does bring a little bit more security from the key component of it, where you have a card that can be deactivated the moment that it's lost. So there's a couple of components that, that the answer is yes, uh, and we're progressing towards that. Even here, it would be at a much rapid pace with putting it into the bond.
1.8 seems a little low, but that's just from an outside perspective for safety and security. For like the whole camera system throughout there.
It is, to be transferred to those new buildings would be higher than what we currently have. So those systems are already included, so the new Centennial, the new Napa High, we don't have to calculate those numbers into it because they would already be included in the construction.
And, and a number of our buildings do currently have a system that we're moving toward. So it's not every building.
Yep.
And this, this includes a system, not a personnel, like I said.
Just, we can't, we can't, yes.
So I think, you know, Marco's, his question about safety, if, if we really wanted to look at adding extra officers, that's probably something we'd want to talk more around supplemental. And, you know, that's something that police at the superintendent level are very interested in and maybe discussing in our next levy about how do we try to get more officers in our elementary and ensure that we have, you know, the safety that we need for our kids.
Do you have the next page?
We do, we do have that as well. So, uh, FCI, it reduces, um, our current FCI by a three point, uh, 6.3%. And if you look at our 10 year, puts us in an incredibly favorable position of a 14.9%. Whether right now we'd be on a trajectory for 26. What it equates to is $32 per 100,000 of assessed value.
That's like what, eight, 78 dollars a month.
You're asking what impact it would be? Are you figuring that? That's really good, because then it's easy to communicate that to your community that this is, it looks like a big number, and it is. But this would be the overall impact.
And again, the reason that is because our current bonds, they would essentially end. And I think that's what's hard for people to realize, how can it be that much if it's over 200 million? If the bonds that we have now will end, and that gives us the opportunity to begin try to keep that tax base as low as we can. So I think that's one way to explain it, because I think sometimes people can then get maybe sticker shock and think, there's no way that it could be something like that. The other thing is remember, our community is also growing. So every business, every person that comes in, that pie gets larger. And Napa is blessed because we have great industry and businesses here. So we have that, that balance just doesn't all fall on homeowners. If we're in other surrounding districts and neighborhoods or areas, um, you know, that's not always the case. And I think that's why, again, we're in a very special spot with our bonding, with our overall tax base, with our overall community capabilities is really exciting.
And for just quick comparison, I didn't want to bring any other district into this, but Monteville's bond is about a hundred bucks per 100,000, for 200 million, correct?
Wow.
And we'd be looking at, with this package D at 210 million, we'd be looking at $32 per 100,000.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Well, that's because our other bonds are ending.
That, that's right.
Because they're stacking where our, exactly. So that's the only reason we can actually do this without minimum.
And I think that's incredibly important for people to, to see and to understand. It's not, it's not a hundred dollars like they're hearing, you know, in the, in the media, the bond from the inside of the state. So, um, very, very telling, though. And it, and it's, it's, it's being good stewards of, of money and the tax base and everything coming and all that. There's some very.
And it's just even the, the demographics in the build, you know, like you said, what each community has and what, you know, Monteville is, is a whole different, whole different landscape than, than we have over here, right? So, um, I, I'm going to ask for package E.
Okay.
I, I mean, yeah, I just want everything. It is, I think it's important and
So if you don't have a slide for package, you
And I knew you wouldn't, you, I knew you wouldn't, but I did hear you say a couple of times about 250 million. And I wanted to make sure
We do have a rough idea.
Was the 250 with the district office as well?
It is.
I, I think it's just important to look, like I said, here's where we are. And let's be realistic and look at what, what is the need and what, what does that do, right? Not to say that that's what we're going to go for or
Right, sure.
One way or the other, but I think it's important, just like Marco asked, like let's, you know, I want to look at all these deferred things, like let's get them on there, what does it look like? Right, I mean.
I, I'm sorry I was late today, I actually thought it was a four bit thing, that's my fault. But I was, I was going through the whole, you know, I spent like a couple of hours distracted, you know, it always has to be. And I came to the same conclusion because you guys outlined all the different parts and you added up so it's 250 million. And I'm like, it's okay, you know, is this, is this what's going to happen? Is this what we're going to shoot for or, or what a district wants to shoot for? But, but then the question comes to mind, is this something the district, does the district feels they, they can sell to the citizens or they feel it's going to be too hard? You know?
Great question.
Because you guys have to, to have that feeling of, okay, this, this, this will work or this will not. This is the need, should we shoot for the need or is the message that we have not enough to, 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 to sell and, you know, to get the, the votes for that need? Where are you guys at with that? I mean, do you, are you guys really sticking to those three plans?
Do we want to answer your question first and then go to Marco's question?
We'll answer that one, Marco, but yeah, let's.
So, so to answer your question, uh, when Eric, um, from the bonds came, he actually gave us an indicator of what that would look like. So the 250, uh, 250 million, it would be $49 per 100,000. That's the price breakdown at the end. And that would take everything from the gray and move it into the green. And add a district office.
Okay, and then, sorry, just one more follow up to make sure. So when we look at the, at the graphic before, appears all the deferred things, is that, is then that all the deferred is taken care of? Or is this, or is there a prioritize?
There is a prioritize.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to just make sure of, that there was, there's still going to be some
There still be deferred maintenance.
250.
Correct, there's still be deferred maintenance. And it's actually wise not to wipe out all your deferred maintenance in one fell swoop, because then in 20 years, you have that same amount that you have to go through.
Go after and, yeah.
So it's not, so the, the 250 does take that into consideration. It is not wiping out all of the deferred.
Thank you.
It does bring it back down into a reasonable manageable amount per year.
So to kind of piggyback on that, uh, as we mentioned earlier with the plant facilities levy, again, not want to wipe it out all once that plant facilities levy right now, which gives you a 10 year opportunity to levy money that you could put and work on your FCI over a 10 year period. I have heard rumors that there's, and possibly ISBA could mention that there is some discussion about trying to extend that maybe to a 15, 20 year sub plant facilities levy. And of course, we'll have to see how that plays out in the legislature and whatnot. But anyways, that, the facilities levy, again, different from supplemental, different from bond, does allow us to address some of those deferred maintenance. And, you know, we, it's possible that we could drop our supplemental, um, if we add things on to that plant facilities levy. And so, again, I know it can sound very complicated for anybody that's listening and watching it. You can, you can get very confused and so I'd encourage people just to reach out if they have questions to talk with us. But that, that could be the primary way. So to go back to answer your original question, Marco, and this is the question, well, first of all, um, we would not try to sell anything. Uh, we, we would just simply state the information about here, here's the need, here's the cost. I mean, that, that's legally what we can do and that's what we would do. As a board, now, you know, you guys have different options with that. Secondly, um, this is where I'm glad I'm a superintendent, not a board member, because this is your decision. But I appreciate you asking. So it, it really tears between the heart and the mind. So my heart is, um, I'm thinking about kids that go through this district in 10, 15, 20 years. And my heart wants to say, yeah, uh, we need to get it all, that, that's really what, uh, it's going to impact and benefit the kids in the community. My head realizes we're in a really difficult time economically. You got inflation at probably the highest level it's been in years. We have one of the heart, highest hurdles in the nation to pass a bond at 66.6%. And our bonds have not been extremely successful around the state as districts try to run them. You know, Idle Falls and Bonneville are trying to run it for the second, third time. Some, there's some opposition in some communities. And so from, I guess my superintendent head, I, I try to think and I look at like package A and I think we get incredible value for that dollar amount. A lot of things move us along. It helps our FCI temporarily, which it gives us time to go into a plant facilities. It gets the community excited about our future. It will touch every kid and the effect, a dollar seventy-five a month is so minimal. I think it shows us being really good stewards of the facilities and the burden that we have just ensuring that we don't, um, you know, overtax folks, which, you know, is a huge thing that we have to consider. So that's mine, that's just me personally, but I, you know, we got a lot of people here, so.
You know my business.
Can I ask, are you open?
Yeah, sure.
You, you know, for sure. I, I agree with everything that Greg said. There is nothing that I can say that would differ in principle. Looking at it from my standpoint, I, I would really look at adding a Centennial Elementary School. To me, it's sort of that package C, uh, for me, for me, is, is that, that building, the, the education the kids are, are getting is a great education, but the building isn't meeting the needs of the kids in, in the programs that are there. So that's my only thing I would add to it is I would like to see that be a part of any package that we have.
I, I would again echo everything that Dr. Russell and Courtney have said. And I would say as someone who's lived in, in Napa for the last 25 years, um, who has three kids currently in our system that quite honestly may not benefit, my older two may not benefit from any of these things happening. We, we need to look at what the need is and we need We, we need to look at what the need is and we need to have an honest conversation with our community about if the need is this. This, these are the things that we need to put in front of the community to really get their input and help them understand that this is a need that we have. And break it down so that it can be understood. Here's the actual impact to you. Here's what it means on your monthly bill. Here's what it actually means coming out of that. Cause for me, a dollar seventy five or five dollars or twelve dollars, while those are real figures that matter, like. At the end of the day, an extra ten dollars for the future of our kids, for the future of our community. I'll find a way to drink less of this. I'll find a way to do something different. It is, is where my heart is. And I completely agree with Dr. Russell. My head is at the spot. He is not wrong. We are at a very unique time. In our communities, in our states, in our country, with all of the economic factors, with all of the challenges that are in the world. And I look at this as a great opportunity to bring our community together. I, I would argue even people who are very against raising taxes in any way, shape or form. If they walk through the halls of Napa High, which I have for the last three years, they can't say, I want my kids to go to school here for their future. And, and we owe it to our kids and our community to, to do that. That's my opinion.
I look at these packages and just on the surface, you know, the package A, package, and I'm looking at this deferred, this deferred list. And I just keep thinking down the road, are we gonna be right back in the same boat in ten years? Are we gonna have to come back and, and ask the community for, for another bond? Because there's been some of these major projects that have been deferred and. Oh yeah, absolutely. And so I, that, I'm, I'm thinking like down ten years down the road. If we can take some of, take care of some of these deferred lists, issues, maybe we've got twenty years down the road and we don't have.
Or a trustee, a chair, if I could, we, we still may have something ten years down the road, but the cost even though it's increasing is smaller. We have this unique opportunity with the timing of our bonds coming off to really right the ship. And then grow at a sustainable level for what bonds and things look like, rather than it being this. And, and that's something that Kerry talked very specifically about that as a community, we are going to have to continually invest in our educational. Um, facilities and our, and our kids, that is going to happen. And if we can get to where that's a sustainable level, which is the whole purpose of the, the facilities plan. Is to get to where that FCI remains as stable as possible for as long as possible. I think we have a unique opportunity in front of us that other districts in the state don't have. They don't have those bonds coming off like we do. Like we have a very unique opportunity. And if we can work with our community to understand that and then ask them to make the decision, that's what we have to do.
You know, I'm, I'm not questioning the numbers that you guys have because everything makes sense. I've been with parents that tell me focus on the kids, focus on kids. We need to have them have the best experience. Okay. And I have parents tell me focus on the teachers, focus on the teacher, because when you focus on teachers, you focus on kids. You know, I think it's focus on everything, everybody.
They're both right.
Okay. So if we're gonna, if, if something's gonna be presented to the public. Or giving me, you know, this feedback. It may be a way for us to put them, uh, to let them, you know, put their, I don't know, something where their mouth is. And when kind of that community step up to the plate. Right? Because that's what I'm hearing. I don't know what you guys are hearing, but that's what I'm hearing.
Well, I think, I think along those same lines is this community has continually stepped up. To support this community and this district and these kids and these teachers. And, and I think it's remembering that, right? And what I hear you saying is people are continuing to say that. And so hopefully we can, we can listen, right, to specifically what they think. But, but I also think it's super important to realize, like, I get that people are like, we don't want to be in debt. I get it, but we're continuing, the idea of a bond not happening, like. I just think of, well, in what world is our state legislature going to help pay for our maintaining our facilities? Well, I don't see that happening anytime soon or in the distant, very, very distant future. Like I don't, I just don't see it happening. It's gonna be our community that's gonna have to maintain and take care of those buildings. And so like you say, working to, working to make a decision between a dollar seventy five for, for the average family per month. To, to eight dollars to even, I mean, I think the, the package E I asked for is twelve twenty five per month. So, I mean, so for that range, it's about how do we capitalize on what's most important for the community? And pick that package that capitalizes on that. And then like, um, Mr. Yarborough saying. You know, ten, twenty years from now, we're in a place where we can make a decision that's like, we can maintain where we're at or we can lower this cost. Even a few bucks a month or whatever.
I, I actually have two points, if you guys are okay with listening about what I care. So one thing I will remind you guys, we have not got super majority on our supplemental levies for many years. And if that's people approving our district, then we wouldn't pass a bond with what we're even getting for supplemental levies. And that, you know what I'm saying? So I think we, we need to realize this community right now isn't pro education. In our world, because we have a lot of people moving in from California, other states who are just sick of taxes in general. So yes, I think we can sell it and that kind of stuff, but we have a huge contingent that is totally against any property tax at all. In County County and Idaho in general. And that's why legislators are on it. The other thing we need to make sure is the legislature hit twice already about trying to stop the number of times we can go out the vote, uh, for a bond. So if we don't get it, we aim high, don't get it, the chance of being able to get it in a whole nother year, we'll lose our cycle. So we gotta be very confident that we can actually pass it at, at the higher level, if that's the case. And I just, I worry. Now Boise does do a facilities upgrade, which remodels schools, does a lot of stuff. And they do a ten year, right? So they do a two hundred and something million, but they'll hold on the bond at different times. Which we could do too. So it could be a two hundred and fifty million, but we're not planning on pulling down fifty million until we're ready for this other stuff to be done. So you can actually make it project wise. So you kind of utilize it. Cause once like Eric said, once you do the bond, you have it forever. That's the ability to do it and then you can pull it down when you need. So that might be a way to manage some of that cost as well. And, and, and actually adjust the, the, what we need for patrons. Until property values go up even more in the future. And it'll, it'll smooth it, if that makes sense. So if you do your big one, then at that point in time, you possibly pull out fifty, something to do later. When, when we have the ability to actually do that work, just to try to do two hundred and fifty and a three year cycle is gonna be impossible.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, Brooke, are you, are you there? Love, love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, I'm here. I, 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 I just really have to go back to what Greg said. I just felt like it was the perfect amount of heart and head. I just, I, I, Randy, I'm with you. I agree with you. We need a super majority. I think that that's really different. Um, and I do, I think that we have a lot of people that dollars are starting to make a difference. I think a whole different tax bracket is being affected right now by inflation. We're asking to bond during that time. So I, I would agree. I think that, again, I felt like, I listened to you all, cause that's all I can do. And I mean, you all make great invalid points. I just really felt like Greg was the perfect amount of like heart and head. Because we, we get a shot to bond and if we overshoot and people think it's too high. And the districts around us have been losing. Now I, I know that there's all different types of factors that we have to consider. And I also too would agree, like, we need to get it done, but it's, you know, it's making sure that we're, we're coming out the gate with something that we know we can. Pass that, you know, that the super majority can carry. And I agree with what Randy said. We have a lot of people who come in and they don't, they don't want to pay taxes in general. Property taxes. So I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm with him a little bit that there is that mindset and it's the amount of people that we need for this one. Could you hear me?
Get ready, Brooke. Thank you. So these are proposals, options.
I think what our hope would be, um, from this is if the board could talk and, and try to kind of narrow down a little bit. You know, timeline speaking, uh, we will present these options again at a regular trustee meeting on the fourteenth again. Uh, so that more patrons, um, can see what these look like. Uh, and then ideally we'd like to be able to take a vote for the, with the board. That kind of last week in November to see if the board's willing to approve a bond and go for a bond measure and what amount or what package.
Will you, will you, um, a- add option D in there? Just, just so that we, I think it gives us a really great breadth in the community to look at from one extreme to another, if you will, and it's a whole thing. So, um.
I think also, I think what, um, I'm, I might be speaking out of turn, but I always do that, it seems. Um, Greg, I think everyone's also looking to narrow it down instead of bringing four options to the table at the next meeting. Is to get some direction of maybe you guys at tonight's meeting, cause you can give them direction. You're not taking action to do a bond resolution tonight, but maybe narrowing it down so that when you have that discussion at the November fourteenth meeting. It's clear communication to your public. So you can hear their voice too. So if at all possible, maybe narrowing it down to two or giving them to, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think two would be a better way. So that they can have clear communication when you're paid, you can give that opportunity for your patrons to hear their voices too. What I think is what you guys kind of needed to look forward to tonight.
Yeah.
I, I think what I would like is to, uh, because if we're gonna present our message to the people, we need to give them. Let, let them see the full picture. And as you mentioned before, there's more stuff in here that we didn't want to put in here. Uh, because we're taking away, you know, and the picture will be difficult, but that's the full picture. To me, I want to see a hundred percent right here. Because when, everything's about perspective. And when you, when we look at Plan E as being the, you know, the highest amount, it's really not. When we look at, if we look at everything. So it may be in the middle for all I know, or it may be, you know? So, and, and if you guys would have presented the plan, all the plans with Plan E being the lowest. And everything else on top of that, then we would have think, oh, that's the lowest, you know? So there's perspective, right? And what, you know, so I would like to see. Yes, this is what it really is. What a hundred percent is, is anyone, you know? And because I think people need to know the messages, this is that what the full need is. But we're not asking for the full need or, or the district is not presenting what the need, you know, they're presenting this much. And then they can see the full picture where it makes sense. At least in my head. Because I think in a weird sort of way. But I, I, you know, the way that it, it's, it's written. I'm not saying that I'm gonna vote for anything, but I'm, if, if I'm, if I have needs, I have never, never. Not gone for the, what is needed, uh, as, as much as possible, as, as high as possible. Because if their needs are not wants clearly, and we gotta be able to. To allow the people to decide. And yes, I can see, I can see that we kind of got very much success in levies before. We haven't had a bond for a long time, right? For a long?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years since we last levy or bonded, sorry.
So, you know, I, I think that people have to speak and we just have to present.
Yeah. And I think it's clear also, even if the decision, if it's later this month or whenever, is to move forward. That doesn't necessarily mean that. I mean, we can, that, that's just a vote that that's what we're gonna, that that's what we do. Not necessarily, I mean, there's still some, doesn't mean like that's the end all, the end of the day kind of thing. But I, we have, this meeting is four hours.
Scheduled for four hours?
We, we didn't do it in time.
Okay. Um, do you have more in this presentation or is you, you've now given it to us to? So I don't know if this is the, the right time or place. I don't bring it up anyways, but I'm looking at other funding options also. And, you know, we've talked about this a little bit before, um, you know, I, I think it's important to explore. All options that might be available, whether they're viable or not, if you find out. But, you know, we have, the district does have property in the area and one of, in particular that I've been looking. Is, is that property over there off the airport road where the freeway is gonna be coming through there. We know that's on its way. So what do we do? I mean, what do we, what does the district do with the property? Is it, is it viable to, to look at selling that property? Cause you know, a school right next to a freeway off ramp is not necessarily the best location. So could that help maybe mitigate some of the expense or even some of the deferments?
And I think you, you probably hit that last part the best. If we, that is definitely an asset that we have that we can look at. How do we, how does it best fit the, the district's needs? There's that part where you mentioned that we can, that I think it, best use of that, if that was the decision of the board, would be looking at a deferred. Because it won't necessarily build a building, if that makes sense. It's, it, it would be used to help offset some of those other things that couldn't be used in a bond. Or, or that could be used in another way that a bond could be used. That probably was trying to say a little bit better. I, I think that we do have those assets and as you look at maybe how we move down the road, there, there might be other assets that we have that we need to look at too. I think the, the priority is really looking at what is our need and what we, what is that need that we want to present to our community? And then we start looking through those options of what is the best tool to help us accomplish those needs. Um, so we do have assets. Um, that's, we're in a very favorable situation because we do have that.
And I think we have to really look at that property. That's a very valuable piece of property.
Well, Napa High School, current Napa location.
You could sell. The answer is yeah, you could. You could put it up for sale. Um, you would get one time money from that. And as Courtney mentioned, it's probably best to put that towards deferred maintenance. Now, the problem with selling the property though, is it's extremely hard to buy property right now and find property within our district. And so I think we might be very cautious to do that. Another thing could be, you know, build lease or have someone develop that into homes. You know, multi-use, maybe industry or whatever businesses, and then the district gets some sort of rent back from that.
On a continuing basis.
Continuing basis, which gives us a continuing revenue stream to be able to address some of these deferred maintenance again over the long term. And same thing with Napa High, again, raising it. It's incredible commercial frontage right there in twelve and Lake Lowell. You could raise some of that, again, lease it out to some developer and allow them to build some businesses and whatever right there. And then get some revenue stream coming from that again, so I think we have to explore those.
Well, I think it's, it's part of the big picture too.
It is. Yeah, absolutely.
And, and to focus on the deferment too, because if we do, you know, if we, or if we're bonded for, you know, a hundred, let's just say it's. Package A, a hundred and fifty three million, there's a lot of deferment in there, but the bright spot could be. That we take some of the assets that the district owns and, and utilize those to the best, to the benefit of them. You know, so I think there's some, there's obviously some trade off there and I'm not the expert sitting here in the seat to determine which is best. But I think that is something that has to be part of the conversation. The other thing is like with Centennial Elementary and some of our other elementaries too. We've had these discussions also is, is, you know, are, most of our elementaries, correct me if I'm wrong, are not at capacity. Is it best for a school district to keep those assets and in, in anticipation of. Them filling up at some point down the road? And then at what point is that, between now and then, is that gonna cost us more money than it's worth?
Yeah, great questions. And, uh, again, if had the crystal ball, Bill, to turn that, you know?
Yeah, I'd always be open.
So the, the point, I think what you're saying though is, is wise. Elementaries right now, most of them, well, some, you know, eighty, ninety percent, some fifty, sixty percent. And so, uh, I think at some point we already need to look at rebounding in some ways. Um, so that we're utilizing those buildings to the, the best capacity we can. Looking at the FCI of some buildings, is it really worth putting money into? Um, to essentially only put lipstick on a pig kind of thing, um, which is not, you know, could be a waste of, of taxpayer money over the long term. If we, again, going back to the assets, you could raise that. Again, do you sell out those properties? Do you lease those properties out? Do you try to create some revenue stream for some of those properties depending on where they're located in the city? Those are all, again, options that the district can consider, but it's utilizing our assets the best. But in looking long term, we're gonna have to do something around our boundaries and making sure that we're using our, our facilities what the best that we can. Possibly repurposing some buildings. Um, that's. That's something that the committee reviewed and looked at, and there are some recommendations around that.
Well, since Centennial was on here for twenty-five and a half million, that's kind of what I was thinking, is that logically, and I could be way off base, it seems like we would address some of those questions now to determine if it's necessary to do the twenty-five million dollars per Centennial.
And what I would say is, it does, and I think I would refer back to this plan first, is what, what do we have? But I think you have some recommendations that have come through that committee embedding that very thing that you're talking about. And through that process, it was deemed that that location was a better location for us to keep, instead of changing it out for another building and raising it. Location-wise, it, it was deemed to be a, a good priority for us to maintain. So just looking back at the, what the proposal, what all the information from our third-party groups have looked at, what that team went through, so I do think you have a basis of that to look at. Now, again, which direction you choose to go, ultimately, you get to have a really good influence on, on how we help us to accomplish that objective. So I think this is the starting point, right? This is those things to look at, and it can start to help you direct using the information we have, and then also asking those same questions. Again, going back to, these are all things that are part of those discussions.
Now, I saw, I'm sorry to interrupt my laptop, but some of the, there was a timeline in there.
There is.
And one that we've already passed, in September, we needed to have a decision by the board. So everything's kind of being pushed aside now, it's November.
Yeah, right.
And so we're still, it tells me that we're kind of in a crunch in, in the decision-making process. So a lot of these things that we may be asking you, maybe, you know, something to look, we just need to make a decision eventually here soon, and when we look at other things of funding and stuff, we can do that later, so, right? We don't have to have that information until, you know.
I think it's knowing that we're going to explore those options and utilizing it, because, again, looking back at the Nampa High property, we have to bond and pass the bond before we can consider that property.
Do anything, yeah.
We can't do anything with it. And that is, to be, that's actually probably our most valuable asset as far as land because of its location in the city. It is probably more valuable than the airport property right now. But again, we can't do anything with those discussions.
That's what I was trying to say, is that we're getting to, yeah, yeah.
To Mr. Stocker's point, we have many in the school district have asked us, well, what's happening there? Are we drawing boundaries, or are we going to raise the school, take a school offline? Are we going to build a new school?
You just say yes, I won't be offended.
Kind of answer is yes, but really, the first step is, we can't do anything without the bond. If the bond doesn't go through, you know, then we got to go back to the drawing board and I always use it as analogy of like, I'm a fisherman, and when you cast to a trout, the first time you cast to the trout's your best time of catching it. Every time you cast to it after, it gets harder and harder to try, and a bond is very similar. Your first time going out, getting people educated and getting people understanding their needs, your best opportunity is then, and it lessens every time after that. So I just didn't want us to be really careful as we think going through, you know, our best time is, we can't do it.
Chairman, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, Mandy's the only board member, the current sitting board member that's ever had to pass a bond resolution so that you can put it on the ballot, because that was done prior to January. I believe it was done in December. For your levy, well, for your levy though, for your levy.
Bond, none of us have.
Right, so with a levy and with a bond, we really have to give the staff the exact guidance, because when they bring that to the table for you guys to actually take action on the bond resolution, the verbiage has to be very specific and verified through legal counsel. And so that's why, like, we're talking about that timeline and crunch time, is that really narrowing it down to at least two options tonight to go fine-tooth comb and bring back to the table for the fourteenth for discussion would be your best, your best way to finalize your decision and bring back a resolution for the end of November. If you want to bring a third option, maybe, but I think it's really narrowing it down to only two, so you can have a clear discussion and give the community that chance to be transparent and understand where you're coming from by that November fourteenth meeting.
I just want to emphasize that, again, it's, it's the, it's, the bond gives us options. And without a bond, whether it passes or not, because it's ultimately up to the voters, and I think sometimes we gloss over that, and we can't, because it is ultimately up to the voters whether or not we have a bond, but to present a bond to the voters gives us options, and if it passes, it opens up those options to even more what we can do. And never, ever, ever can we lose sight of, of, it's not about a brand new shiny high school. Really, I saw those, I saw those in high schools, they blew me away. Huge, beautiful. They're hurting. But it's, so it's not about the, the brand new shiny school, it's about what opportunities that school provides for the students who go in there, and subsequently, what of this, what the same equitable opportunities are provided at Skyview and middle schools and elementaries and so on and so on, because everybody's going to go to Nampa High School or whatever. So I think that's, that, for me, that's the most important part that I'm looking at, and of course, obviously, second, close second is, is involved too. Anyways, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 thank you for pointing that out. I mean, I totally agree with what you're saying, but I will get straight to what I'm thinking about, since we're given two options. I, you know, they talked about the heart and the mind, and that's where I'm leaning. I'm leaning at the heart, which tells me Plan E, I'm leaning at the mind, which tells me Plan C, and I continue to talk about both of them.
Plan E, what was that, the two hundred and fifty, is that the one?
That's the big deal.
Yeah.
But we don't have any of that detail.
I can get it for you, I can give you the, the cost, I showed that, it's forty-nine dollars per hundred thousand, but essentially, it's all the gray.
Moving on.
Yeah, it's, bring it all together, yep.
And what I think the board, like Marco is being very clear, I think we'll hear from Mandy and Brooke, but then I think the overall is providing clear communication on whatever you guys decide tonight for the board packet and then at that meeting, right?
And I, so you said B and E?
No, I said Plan C.
C, thank you, sorry.
For the, for the mind.
Okay.
And Plan E for the heart.
Okay.
Use some district angle here.
You just want me to go?
It's up to you.
I'll tell you why I'm, I'm wavering a little bit, it's because I, you know, I like to create a whole other package.
Cover the blue.
You put these menus out there for me, I really want to pick and choose. I'll, I'll tell you what about C that I'm worried about, is the safety and security. I think that's a big, it's a big thing. I think it's a big thing that impacts kids, I think it's a big thing that impacts parents, it's a big thing that impacts employees, it's a big thing that impacts the community, right? And so I get that the safety and security is happening, but I think the faster we can get to get all our buildings in a really good place and, and on a really good, that's the one, that's the holdup. So if I had to pick between the options that were there, I would say D and E is where I'm leaning towards, because D includes safety, but I might pick and choose some other things like.
Is it all a car? I didn't know.
I don't know if it is.
So you had the information in front of you.
That is why they didn't give this to me.
We can do a C and I, that's a good, I don't know.
Well, that is the D, right? I mean, pretty much.
D has a little bit more, yep.
It's a little bit more.
Yep.
But I do think Centennial is important, I just, and that's why the E, the D option, right, because that included Centennial and the safety and security.
Yep, well, do you want to put D back, Tyler, can you put option D back up?
C included Centennial also, didn't it?
Yes, just not the security.
So, so D, the, the major component is, is between C and, B, C and D, D takes B and C, brings them together and adds up to more components. So D is a combination of B and C plus, yep.
And the thing that I would do different on, probably on D, is actually I would look at possibly removing some of those top renovation and capital renews and bringing that amount down just a little bit. But that's the only difference that I would really do to account for the, the safety and security.
That sounds like C plus.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you say that, then I'm bored, I'm not willing to say C.
D plus safety and security. I hope he saw that.
I thought you weren't going to see these together.
You, you put a D after it.
Trustee Taylor.
Chairman.
What is that, the, do where the?
Yes, so, is it me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so in looking at these, I, I guess when you guys changed out and, you know, knocked off some of the schools or added things on there, I would tell you guys based on priority, that's how I would choose. Just because like, I'm not sure why we took Centennial out here, or why you guys felt like each of those options would work, so I would want to go based on order of need. So I would look for you guys to narrow down those choices and would just agree based on, I mean, Courtney, or, sorry, Mr. Stocker, you've done just a phenomenal job. It's all very thorough, it's so thorough that it doesn't even seem overwhelming. So I, but again, I'm just sitting here staring at the screen and nothing else, so I don't have a lot of noise. And then the other thing is, is I, I was just kind of side chatting with Tyler, and when we're done, Tyler could make a video that we could get out a little bit early, because that video is phenomenal, and I think we could get that video out before the fourteenth, and then on the fourteenth, we would get feedback from our patrons, and I think that that gives us a little bit more guidance as to where they want us to go, because as we're talking, I definitely hear that we're all for, you know, getting these projects done. I'm hearing how much we all want, you know, to move forward, so that's not a concern. My main concern would just be making sure that we're move for, moving forward in a way that the community feels comfortable, which I think we're going to find out on the fourteenth. And then again, by order of what you guys decide is what I would take at face value, what you guys decided you felt were the most important packages to move forward, but I mean, this is just great work.
Yeah, great.
That's it.
Good, thank you. I, I, I'm leaning, what, what I get excited, I can't say that because it's still money, is that package D, thirty-two bucks, right? Thirty-two bucks a, a year per hundred thousand, so, I mean, that's, that seems almost not right. I mean, you're talking about that much money. It seems like it should be a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a year. But the bang that we get for that buck, that's what, that's what excites me. That, that's where I'm, that's where I get excited, is I have that two hundred and ten billion dollars, or thirty-two dollars. So I, I am leaning towards pa, package C and package D.
So, so clarifying, package C, I think you were talking about earlier, is not the thirty-two, that's the seventeen?
Package D is the thirty-two.
Okay. I thought I heard you say C for D, so.
At least you understood my.
Yeah, I did, I'm with you. I got you.
Well, I think safety and security is always going to be, you know, and it's, and it's two million dollars, and I know that sounds a lot.
We could create that package with it, and it's not going to have a huge influx on that overall.
It's two million dollars.
It's a hundred and eighty-five million.
Yeah, hundred, yeah, hundred, so essentially, package C turns into a hundred and eighty-nine million, and the.
And we can rerun the numbers off.
Rather than eighteen, it's probably nineteen or twenty dollars.
Oh, it's good to have a math teacher on.
I, I got a lot of math, it's been a really fun night, you guys have been doing a lot of math.
Yeah, so, so a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty plus.
So we could do C plus.
The one point eight, two million dollars for safety and security, it's, it's not, it's not a good book at all. C and, C and D for me, and I think we're going to get, if, if, if that's the direction that we choose to go, when we end up doing it, we're going to get some big things about the, huge things about the.
Can I, sorry, Tyler, can I see that for package D, that, the pie chart page, just one more time? Yeah, so almost.
It's about eighty percent.
Cuts in half, does more than cut in half.
Yeah.
The FCI.
You look at a ten-year FCI, it is incredible.
That's the investment.
That's the investment.
Yeah, and to me, that, that's a huge thing.
Yeah.
For our buck down the road, right, ten years down the road. Yeah.
Ten years ago, who would have thought we would be in the situation we are now with the economy?
Right.
Who knows what the next ten years is going to bring, and, yeah, I just, we leverage what we can leverage at this point now, and I think that's, I honestly, I think that's a smart move, what we do, even. So can, can I see the packages side by side? Is what Brooke, trustee Taylor said.
There is, we do have one that doesn't have all the pretty graphs, but it will give you, there, that's it right there. It doesn't have, it does not have D, and we can add it to. So essentially for D.
That caught your by surprise, didn't it?
Yeah. So, so D, if you look at that zero, that would be the thirty-two, but the number up there for deferred costs would be like twenty-two or twenty-four.
Twenty-three, nice.
Yep. Yes, because it's, two ten point two.
So, again, I think what I'm hearing from the board is definitely a Plan C that maybe incorporates safety and security, that would be one option for sure. And then I kind of hear a mix between a Plan E and a Plan D. You know, so going back to what Clark Ramon said, if we're trying to narrow it down to two options, I feel like we have one, one hearing consensus-wise is Plan C would be one, and I think it's just trying to determine what would that other one be, is it a D or a E? I'm more agree.
Well, I would disagree, I think the D is the one that we all.
Well, so I had, Marco had a C.
Marco had a C.
Jeff had a C, so three had a C, we're taking votes, we're tallying, I guess we're not being.
But Marco did say, trustee Galley did say C and E.
He said C and E.
C and the mind, A and the heart.
Well, Marco said C with.
C plus security.
C plus safety, yes.
C plus.
So to me, that, I mean, that sounds like something that most of we, for consensus wise. I think we're halfway there, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
So it's between D and E, and you say what? No, C and D, I think.
We have C, do you want D or?
And C is including, plus insecurity, that's going to be the base.
High bred C.
Let's say that, high bred C for sure, or C plus. Now, it sounds, and maybe we should, since trustee Taylor's not here and she's being rather quiet, maybe we should ask her, but I think what you're saying is now we're narrowing it down from an E and D, right? Is that what? That's the last thing that I heard, is that we, you guys have narrowed it down now, E or D or something?
A hybrid.
Hybrid, and.
Well, I think, I think E is just, I, I think that is going a little, I, I think that's pushing, pushing the limit there. Two hundred and fifty was what it was, huh? And that was about fifty bucks.
Forty-nine, forty-nine, yep.
And, yeah, I think we can get a really good, smart leveraging use of money at the two hundred and ten, I think we can with, with really a lot of this here, I'm just again, down the road. So I'm, I'm sticking with D, I think we can really get what we need out of that.
I would move to the C plus and the D.
One thing I did hear that trustee Kirkman brought up was, sorry, chair Kirkman brought up, again, is the, we've got all these other assets and how that plays in, and so to get to that again of E, maybe we accomplish a lot of, we accomplish everything in E, but we do it through D and the other things we have, like, I think that's a cover.
Maybe there's a way that we can save and not have to spend that much money, and we end up, we end up making that because we do have these assets. Again, it opens up all these options that I think it's really important to have, and get the community input on that too. Here's all these options we can discuss and talk about. So.
No, that makes sense, you know, we're, we're shooting for something, or we're going No, that makes sense, even though we're we're shooting for something or we're gonna vote for the one specific package, doesn't mean that that will not change at the end with all the different things that we're very well.
Correct.
Could be a very beneficial.
Yep.
To the board at the end of the day, so.
So I think, I I think trustee Taylor was, whatever you guys decide.
C and D.
Well, I actually, I threw out my packages, you guys, in the comments, I'm sorry, I I thought you saw them, but if I had to choose, like, what I was saying was in some of the options, they had like crossed out and said, we'll do this school and not this school, but the money was the same. But if I had to just pick C and D because it's giving us two different monetary amounts.
Okay, so trustee Taylor, C and D? She she wrote that, she documented that in a, in a.
I did, but I mean, I thought you saw it at the same time, so, sorry.
And you're, and you're up there with C plus.
Um, you're saying C plus was C plus security, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I was down with that as well, I like the addition of the security, and I I like having the two options cause again, if we can present even before the fourteenth, I I loved it, the package idea was brilliant.
Well, to be one with the board, because I think they're working so well together, I think that changes to that.
I think that's all good.
So.
I mean, shoot. Yeah, I got a little more than my thought, but so I thought it was good.
So to clarify, what, moving forward, you guys are looking at C plus and D? To bring back to the table on X, yeah.
Yes.
Rework the the numbers for those and have those ready.
And I really like the idea of a Tyler presentation, cause that was just, the presentation that we had in the beginning was powerful.
Yes, very cool.
And and you're right, it did, it evoked emotion, so very, it was a very good reason.
A side note to that too, if you you noticed, one of our, kind of our monikers that we're gonna look off of is we wanna build, we're building a foundation of excellence, and so that's some of the things we want to, it goes to our mission. In the back of what our our district mission is, it ties directly to it.
Yeah, and and excellence not only for the kids, but also for the teachers, which is something we gotta somehow, I'm trying to figure in my mind how winter berry goes to.
Extraordinary opportunities.
Yeah.
Yep. Hey, so where are we, I mean, is that the, I was expecting to go to here, Paul? What else can we do?
That's the only thing on the agenda this evening.
That's all we can do, just for clarity, so I understand administration, um, looking at um create a Plan C that includes the the uh security and a Plan D and then create a presentation similar to what Tyler did, because shares information about those.
Mm-hmm.
And getting that out and letting the community know that on November fourteenth, the board would like to have some public comment.
Yeah.
Yes.
And can we send an email out, I mean, I mean, there's a big news, so everything, I mean, I don't know how many people look at that, but it's every way we can inform people.
We 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 can, yeah.
Yeah.
Do an email, we can put stuff on social media, let folks know.
I think our good, we have our internal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm I'm wondering if uh, I I just am gonna bring up, like, you know, yes, people can email us, but maybe with doing a form of some sort, like maybe the to keep it all in the same area is more responses in the same area is what I'm thinking, but.
I think I, if you want, I could add all the emails in the form, the form that was last um that they used to use did not, um, it had complications.
Yeah.
And I think if you want, we could do something like if they email just one email, but I think if you change it up too much for one topic, they're gonna want it for all the time, all the time.
Yeah.
Um, but we could look at options with the district, like is it a survey link that they can just, or something like that? But I think the other thing that um chairman Kirkman was going to mention is maybe making sure we find a location that might be larger for this meeting just in case. And so I think that would give the opportunity for email or if we put a feedback source. And maybe it would be Napa High might be a good one with, oh, maybe not. See, I'm like, let's, let's take it to the source.
I think you're talking about the space there, I don't think we're having that space.
Darn it, yeah, uh but looking at, maybe when they seek out, they seek out information when we send it out, maybe we'll have a way for them to come back, but I think that, if we go back to a form, why aren't we continuing to use it for all hot topics? So I think maybe just making sure we have a location, it can still email, and then if there's another way that we want the leadership team to gather information and provide it back to the board rather than multiple ways.
You know, last night I got woken up by the Amber Alert, I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, we need one of those so we can send information.
The bat, the bat signal.
I I don't know if that will help people fill those out.
I'd have undesired consequences.
I'd have undesired consequences.
Can we, really, can we get like a, the, yeah, but school district logo? Signal, it's out in the sky. There's gonna be a meeting. I think, I just wanna make sure we hear from from folks, it's super important.
Yeah, and I think that also means that we have to be active and reaching out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great.
Well, fourteen, so we'll, we'll, fourteen to two, we'll.
Uh, um, I will work with leadership um between, I wanna say, I think we should be able to narrow down a location by the end of Monday, if not tomorrow.
Yep.
But let's give ourselves a good timeframe, so by the end of Monday, just in case, we wanna make sure we have technology, so we have a live stream. Um, and then we will also get the agenda posted early be- before.
But that's where we'll we'll take public comment on these two.
Yeah, along with email and however, um if there's another platform that the leadership team wants to use when they send out information.
And just to clarify that the choices are gonna be Plan E or Plan B, Plan C plus or not?
I I think they're gonna bring back opportunity for you guys to have a deeper dive into the conversation. Right now, it's going to be, those are brought back to the table on November fourteenth, and then you guys can go from.
Make a motion on that day.
Well, you're gonna give them direction for an actual resolution if you decide to go that direction. Okay.
We we, the resolution will take us a little time to put together.
And you can only have one option.
You can only have one option, yeah.
Yeah, I think we ideally, we hear some comments, um, or then can give the administration some direction of which to bring forward the final resolution. It's gone through legal, um, that we could actually take a yes or no vote on, and we can get that last week in November if we want that.
Yeah, that's where we'll go on whether or not we're forward. Okay, well, I gotta commend you, Courtney, so.
Yeah.
Very well, very well done, very well presented, it's very clear, it's very concise. It can get confusing, but I think that's our fault, cause we ask questions and.
A great question.
But they were all answered, at least in my opinion, and uh, and Tyler, kudos to you for for what you do too, appreciate that. Any others? Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna add, I just wanna add on and say Courtney, not only today, but I, or sorry, Mr. Stocker, not only today, but you've laid foundation very well, you have, I I felt like a lot of what you did today was review, which I love, and so I just wanna add that in there, and yes, Tyler, you're the man.
It's a good team effort around here.
Yeah, seriously.
Yeah.
So are there any other comments or or questions from trustees? Trustee Taylor, anything else?
No, I just, I, again, I just, I appreciate, I really feel like for a few months now, I I I saw today what I expected to see, which is predictable. I think when things are predictable, they create consistency, I think consistency leads to trust, I I just think today was great work.
Right. My only disappointment is that we didn't get to look at all of those big old maps.
Hey, I can pull them out whenever you wanna stop by.
I know where you keep them.
I know.
All right, well, on that note, then, we will adjourn at five fifty-eight.